Thank you everyone for being here to the Florisville City Council regular meeting for May the 25th, 6:00 PM. And I'd like to call this meeting to order. If you would please rise with me for the invocation, we have Pastor Peter from the Florisville United Methodist Church to lead us.
Most holy and gracious God, we thank you for this day and the goodness of your grace and your mercy that touches each and every one of ours. We thank you dear God for Florisville, Texas, and for what it means to us and the history that it ushers in as we go into the future. We pray dear Lord for all of its leaders. We dear God, lift up to you, City Council. Lift up dear Lord, our police department, our first responders, and all dear Lord who serve this wonderful city that you have called into being. We thank you dear Lord for the things that hold us in common, for the things dear God that bless us and nurture us and help us dear Lord to keep these things in mind. For it grieves your spirit dear Lord that there are things dear God that just tear families and people and the community apart. Help us dear Lord to discern your truth for the good of your will in our lives, that we may with peaceful resolution and goodness in our hearts and minds to be the people that you've called us to be, for the future of the children that come today, to show us some of what blesses them in their life. For all of these dear God, and for so much more, we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance on the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated. We do have a quorum for tonight's meeting and attendance. Councilman David Johns, Councilwoman Gloria Cantu, myself, Mayor Sissy Gonzalez-Dippel, Councilman Jacob Silva, Councilman Nick Neeson, and Councilman Gerard Jimenez. Thank you. At this time, I open the floor for citizens' comments. Any citizens who would like to speak has five minutes. If you would come up to the podium, state your name, and we'd love to hear from you.
Mayor, Council, I'm Fred Gonzalez, Florisville. My comments will relate to your CNA item 3F, but before I do that, I want to say that I appreciate your clarifying and resubmitting several CNA's, I'm sorry, on the ordinances as they should. These clearly convey what your proposal. One plea though, while setting costs/fees, keep in mind that a good number of our affected citizens do not have high incomes and have trouble meeting ends. Thus, do not consider these intakes as moneymakers and do set them at the lowest feasible rates. Now on to CNA item 3F, the hiring outside legal counsel to deal police matters. Let's follow the trajectory of actions regarding this issue. One, the council goes into executive session, meeting, to discuss as notified police policies and procedures. We, the public, are told very little or nothing on their discussions. Two, the resulting outcome is a decision by the council to hire an outside consultant to investigate PD doings. Council asserts that this is not a witch hunt, but an effort to make the department better. Keep that in mind. Three, next thing we now, unscheduled police training is indiscriminately canceled, including mandatorily required training. This action supposedly is based on communication with the hired consultant. In my view, this meet acts approach does not inspire competence in the consultant's professional competency. Rather, it reflects the lack of understanding of the nature of PD training. Four, as predictable, since this action would have significant potential adversary sauce for the city, the training schedule is reinstated, and we thank you for that. Five, now here we are, hiring outside legal counsel to provide legal counsel services regarding the city's PD and associated issues. And this obviously begs the question, why do we need special legal counsel to work on making the PD better? Isn't that what was on the table? We would have to hang our brains at the door to not see what appears to be happening here, a headlong dash to do somebody in. All indications provided have been negative. First comes the mishap with the training, then we are provided only negative tidbits of the proposed findings. Is this what the supposed helping the PD review was all about? Or we taking adverse personnel actions before we even officially know the investigation results, recommendations? Again, what happened to the constructive "making the police department better"? Wouldn't the $37,5,000 and what you're spending on legal counsel much better be used for that, and that is fixing what's wrong? Based on my 30 years of experience in employee management relations, going this route is going to cost our city much more, not only in money, but then in other things than what you see on the table. Now, let's do the constructive thing and save ourselves all of that and more. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Thank you. Another gentleman standing up.
I believe I can speak, Lady Dow.
Okay. Okay. If no other citizens' comments, we're going to move on to old business. Consideration and action, excuse me, to approve the minute meetings of the regular council meeting on May the 11th. Council, you have in your packets those minutes. I think you've had a chance to look them over. If not, I'll give you a couple of more minutes. If there's any questions or suggested changes, please let us know. I'll go ahead and move to approve the minutes for a regular meeting on May 11th. Before I entertain that motion, is there any questions again by the council? I was going to give you a little bit. If not, I have a motion on the floor to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting on May the 11th. And I have a second, a motion by Councilwoman Cantu, and a second by Councilman Jimenez. Any citizens' comments? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Five zero, thank you. Onto item 1B, consideration and action to approve minute meetings for the special council meeting on May the 15th, 2017. Again, you have it in your packet. If there is any changes that you feel that need to be made, or any comments about them.
Then I also move to approve the special council meeting on May the 15th, 2017.
If there's no other questions, I have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Cantu to approve the minutes of May 15th. Do I have a second?
Hell, second motion.
Seconded by Councilman Neeson. Any citizens' comments to the effect? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Moving on to our presentation, we are very excited to have the Florisville Peanut Festival 2017 Court of Fluttering Enchantment here. We are calling up to the podium Carmen Leal. Thank you very much for being here.
Mayor and Council, I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to present to you our 2017 Royal Court. I'm honored to introduce to you today the 2017 Court of Fluttering Enchantment, and I'm going to allow them to introduce themselves and then I'll speak on them.
Good evening, I am Queen Elect, Caroline Burkett, and my King, Trace Anahosa, cannot be here tonight.
Good evening, I'm Princess, our first runner-up, Princess Elect, Peyton.
Hello, I'm Prince Runner-Up Tyler.
Good evening, I'm Princess Elect, Nancy Strucker.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Sarah Bruitt, and I'm the Princess Elect.
Good evening, I'm Noah Chesser, and I'm Princess Elect.
Good evening, I'm Brent Moy, and my Princess Mary Lewis cannot be here.
Good evening, I'm Princess Elect, Jack Benwood.
Thank you so much for that. Thank you. Mayor and Council, everyone here is a student of Florisville High School, and it is a great honor and a huge responsibility to be a member of the Royal Court. Not only do they serve as leaders in our community, who young children often look up to, but they also serve as ambassadors for our beautiful city of Florisville. This summer, they will spend a lot of time traveling and attending numerous publicity events that will allow them to promote not only the Peanut Festival, but also the city of Florisville. And they will also, once they are crowned in October, they will begin to tour parades and promote our city in that way as well. And they go all through South Texas, so it's very exciting for our community to have a great young group of people who go out and represent us all over South Texas. And our current reigning court has been busy bees. They have had parades just about every weekend, and so they are continuing to do their role in that. And, you know, we're very proud of the commitment that they have made and the job that they're doing, and we're looking forward to a wonderful year. At this time, I'd like, with your permission, to allow them to offer some gifts to you and take a picture.
Thank you.
Do you want to stand behind us? Would that be possible?
Thank you. How beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Mayor, do you want to just stand between the, if they could stand behind you?
Thank you.
Okay? And between the five stands?
Thank you.
So they can take a picture.
Thank you.
Yeah, they can get in between us. Guys, go ahead and just fill in in between all of it. Caroline, you want to come over here, and I'll stand on the other side of you?
It's good to go. Okay, I'm standing. She's a tall one right here. You want them over? There you go. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Enjoy your company. Thank you so much. And thank you for the gifts.
Thank you so much, that was absolutely wonderful. And moving on to our next presentation, item 2B, presentation and discussion, the Ralph Gerhart Scholarship Fundraiser. We have Mr. Pete Huhas in the audience to tell us about this.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and all the citizens. It is my pleasure to announce that we're going to have a fundraiser for the Ralph Gerhart Scholarship Fund that has been sponsored by the Wilson County Patriots and Acme Gun and Gold here locally in Florisville. And it is going to be a shootout. And we're asking people to consider June 3rd as an opportunity for them to come out and
support this worthy cause.
There's going to be a flea market, target shooting, competition shooting, and there will be some gift certificates available for the winners of those events. And of course, our goal is to take all the proceeds and put that towards the Ralph Gerhart Scholarship, which applies to students all throughout San Antonio, not just Wilson County. Anyone can apply for this particular scholarship, and it is based strictly on knowledge of the Constitution. And that's how those finalists are selected. It's a very worthy cause, and I have some flyers here for those who'd like to participate. The fees and times are available. I also have my range master, John Murkowski, is over here, and we also have, the address is on the flyer, it's on FM 1303, not too far from town here. So I take that opportunity, and the flyer is available for anyone that's interested.
Thank you. We did get copies in our packages, but thank you.
I'm sorry, where did you say that was going to be?
It's June 3rd.
Oh, but where?
It's on FM 1303, it's at John Murkowski Ranch, not far from here, it's on FM 1303. I have the address right here. It's on your flyer, 8791.
Okay. There it is. I got it, I got it. But, all right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next presentation discussion comes from Sean Spencer from Hartland with the Park Update.
Good evening, Miss Mayor and Council, men and women. To give an update about the park, the progress is, good progress is being made. We're just, I think, scheduled for this Friday to be done with all the underground drainage work that's been taking place this week. It's all on site and being laid. I think all that is black now is right behind the building here at the football fields to get the drainage put in there. We had, one thing I'd like to commend y'all on is y'all appointing your Citizens Oversight Committee that we met on, I think it was on Tuesday night we met, and it's been very helpful because we've had association people to, through the progress of the construction, to point out things that they would like to change, or things that they like or that they don't like, and it's been very helpful. We've reshuffled some things on the fields to accommodate more age groups than the original plan, and some different things like that, so that's worked out very well. The grading work is finished, the irrigation work is finished, the drainage should be finished by the end of this week. It's a little tedious, these things are, because when you, we have the grade finished on the top, so when you cut, you have to stack the soil back in the same way it came out, or else you get trenches. So you've got to put the clay on top of the pipe, whatever pipes there are, put the topsoil on top of that, so you have nice level ground and it won't settle. So there's a lot of handwork involved in that, so it goes a little bit slow, but that's nearly done. One of the results of the Oversight Committee meeting, I believe it was the first one we had, in the original package that we proposed and that was approved, the football fields were not lit, and there was a huge desire to have at least one of the football fields lit. I'm happy to report that we were able to get, to kind of tinker around with the budgets and get things to work where we have a full-lit football field. One of them, the second one's on the grant project, so it'll be determined later, but in this project, one of them is lit. We were able to use Musco Sports Lighting, which was, this is kind of the banner cow ball sports lighting in the United States. We were able to get them, their package with their remote, hands-free, all the bells and whistles on it, along with the football field, so that's good news. I'm glad that we were able to get that in the budget and accommodate that. The lighting on the football field will be, you know, you can play a high school football game on the lighting on your Pee-wee field, which is probably better lighting than anybody in the room played football in in high school, so it's very, very well done. We have had a lot of luck finding good, good quality local subcontractors. We selected a concrete subcontractor that is a Florisville company. They're to start on Monday. The first thing they're going to do is form up the concession restroom area, so we can start roughing in that area, get the electrical and the plumbing and all the stuff into the slab, get it poured and get that building built. So with the electricians being selected, the lighting package selected, everything on its way out here, we've been working on a flat surface. Now it's fixing to start rising up from the ground, so those ground structures are starting to go in. Everything, pretty much for the whole project, is on order. Some variation of being manufactured and delivered, and all that stuff is being coordinated. The work is going really well. Like I say, the local folks that we've worked with have been great, have done good quality work, and it's been a good city to work in. We're happy to be here. We're ready to get seed down because y'all can grow, this dirt grows grass, so I'm ready to get seed down and start watching grass grow. It's going to be a beautiful project whenever it's all complete. I think that's about my update.
At one point, there were hogs back there causing problems. What's the status of them?
There were hogs. I believe that there were some traps put out to try and capture the hogs and try and either, I don't know what happened to them, they were eradicated or took off-site. We have not been having as much, as many. There was kind of a, I think what I believe is whenever we got big rains, we probably got hogs up from the riverbed down there, up into the flat areas. And they'll continue to be, they're here, you know, so we'll continue to chew them off where we can and do things, and going forward, you know, when the project's complete, probably have some traps out there and try and do things that you can to steer them away. They like soft dirt, and they like grass, and they like to root, so it's a, you know, kind of an environmental issue, if nothing else.
You said you're getting ready to put the seed down. How do you water it?
You're fully irrigated out there. We don't have water hooked up. We won't put seed down until our water's hooked up, but your irrigation is in all of the fields right now, currently. So as soon as we get hooked up to water, we'll start irrigating, we'll get the sod down and get seed down and start getting growth going there.
Thank you. Any other, any questions or comments for Mr. Spencer?
I'm a little bit excited for y'all to finish.
We are too. We're ready.
All the kids and coaches and everything else, that'll be good.
Absolutely. They've played the season down there, looking at this thing getting built, so if I was a kid, I'd be excited to get up there as well, for sure.
First woman run or something?
That's right. Anybody else?
Any other comments? Thank you very much for the update. Our next presentation discussion is Arlena Beranga. I believe I saw her walk in. Yes, it's on the Wilson County No Kill Animal Shelter.
Thank you, councilmembers. I think I saw, the presentation was, there were copies made for everybody, but, yeah, we've done, I have a thumb drive with the presentation.
Watch.
Okay. And then I have brochures for all of you, and contact information here.
Do you rather than just go off of this, or do you want to see it on the? I think if we could, if we could see it off of there, because then the audience can see it too, or citizens can see it. There are some copies back there. I had some extra ones back there. Okay. What you can do is you can stand here and you can turn that. We apologize that you might have to turn around a little bit in your chair to see it all.
Okay. This presentation is on the Wilson County No Kill Animal Shelter. This may be something new for people that haven't heard of us yet, but you'll get lots of information here. This is just a table of contents, I'm going to quickly go through that, so we're going to cover our mission statement, introduce our board members, not all of them are here, some of them are traveling right now, and talk about the different committees that we have putting this thing together and costs associated with it. So, what is Wilson County No Kill Animal Shelter? The name kind of says it all. It's a community effort that was created as a no-kill, meaning we prefer not to euthanize any animals. It's a nonprofit organization, a 501(c)(3) according to IRS regulations, and we are aiming to provide innovative programs and services that benefit the animals in Wilson County. We'd like to serve, our vision is to be a model shelter addressing the issue of pet overpopulation by providing solutions through services and prevention through education. We will be the exemplary shelter for the South Texas region by executing exceptional business and service practices. So, no-kill. A lot of people think that it means every single animal that comes into a shelter is saved. That's not necessarily the case. The true definition, according to the Humane Society and ASPCA, is that 90% of the animals need to be released live. So there's that 10% window, and what that is, is animals that they consider unadoptable or not treatable. So last year, it took an animal that was hit, or appeared to have been hit by a car, picked it up off the side of the road, took it to the vet, and upon x-ray and, you know, evaluation by the vet, it was determined that the injuries were so severe that it was more humane to put the animal down. So those kinds of situations, or a feral dog, you know, it's almost impossible to rehabilitate an animal like that and domesticate them if they've lived their entire life in the wild. So cases like that, it would be a case-by-case decision on whether or not the animal would need to be euthanized, but we would never euthanize an animal like Animal, excuse me, Animal Care Services, ACS, in San Antonio. They euthanize daily just to create more space so they can bring in more animals, because that's how bad their problem is. But that would not be an issue here for us, that we would, we're not a kill facility. So in our mission statement, we would be providing temporary shelter to stray, abandoned, and surrendered animals for the purpose of finding them permanent suitable new homes. We would also provide assistance and possibly financial aid to prevent overpopulation through Spain-Notre programs, and of course, grant programs similar to what they get quite a bit of in San Antonio. We would support a healthy pet community by providing general veterinary services at low or no cost, again, through grants and donations, and that would be as funds allowed. And that would be for people that cannot afford pet care. And I see it all the time on Facebook, you know, somebody's dog got out the gate, got hit by a car, they cannot afford a huge bill like that. Well, we're not going to pay for everybody in the county, however, if we can get enough support, enough donations, if we have some funding built up, we might be able to assist in some way with the care of that animal. Also, to promote a lifelong responsible pet ownership to residents within the county through educational brochures, seminars, tours, and special events, so we'd like to go into the schools and start there, you know, kind of changing the mindset of what it means to have a pet. It's a good 15 to 20-year commitment when you adopt an animal. It's not, let me get a puppy and then two weeks later, okay, I hate cleaning up after it, I don't want to deal with this anymore. So teaching kids, you know, it's a big commitment. And then also, like with the alternative school, kids are sent to the alternative school because they have behavior issues in the school district, so working with them to help with rehabilitating the children by helping us rehabilitate dogs, teaching them basic obedience skills, helping us with cleaning kennels, whatever it is. Same thing with parolees that maybe need to do community service, or any group that needs to do community service. We could be one of those options for them. We would also, we're already doing this actually, establish a cross-referral network with local for-profit vet clinics, also schools, like Texas A&amp;M has an excellent veterinary program, so partnering with them to utilize their expertise in providing care for the animals that we would have. Also to provide assistance and information for two others whose purposes are consistent with the purpose of the Wilson County No Kill Animal Shelter. So our board members, I'm the president, Crystal Fowler, she's traveling, she's our vice president, Glenda Lansdale, the secretary, and Jan Smith, the treasurer. So in order to get this kicked off, we did this about a year, a year and a half ago, we put together seven different committees, and each committee has a different role. So land acquisition, facility planning, land acquisition being, okay, let's look at different options for acquiring land, whether it's a long-term lease, renting, purchasing, somebody donating the land, whatever, just look at all the possibilities so that we can find a location for the shelter. with the purpose of the Wilson County No Kill Animal Shelter. So our board members, I'm the president, Crystal Fowler, she's traveling, she's our vice president, Glenda Lansdale, the secretary, and Jan Smith, the treasurer. So in order to get this kicked off, we did this about a year, a year and a half ago, we put together seven different committees and each committee has its, has a different role. So land acquisition, facility planning, land acquisition being, okay, let's look at different options for acquiring land, whether it's a long-term lease, renting, purchasing, somebody donating the land, whatever, just look at all the possibilities so that we can find a location for the, for the shelter. For the facility planning, that's, you know, having a layout of the shelter, the facility, you know, where the dogs will be housed, where the cats would be housed, and so on and so forth. Public relations and fundraising, they kind of go hand in hand. Public relations, keeping our image consistent across the board, you know, nothing...